Spotlighting Hawaii's leaders.
We want to bring in Governor David E. G.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Lieutenant Governor, good morning. Thanks so much for joining us. Mayor Derek Kawakami.
Thank you so much, Senator, for being here.
Spotlighting the issues.
Where is the virus right now in our community?
How much is this overall going to cost the state?
How are you responding to the community's concerns? Talk about the level of citations that you guys are writing.
Spotlight Hawaii with Yanji Denise and Ryan Kalaisuji on the digital platforms of the Honolulu Star Advertiser.
This episode of Spotlight Hawaii is brought to you by Longstrugs.
Aloha. Happy Aloha Friday. I'm Yanji Denise, joined by Ryan Kalaisuji. This, of course, is Spotlight Hawaii on the digital platforms of the Honolulu Star Advertiser. And Ryan, today we are heading over to Honolulu Halei.
That's right. We are going to be catching up with Council Chair Tommy Waters, who's going to join us to talk about a number of issues that is in front of the city council. Joining us right now is Chairman Waters. Thank you so much for joining us. Great to see you this morning.
Good morning and aloha to you and your viewers.
Let's start off talking about something that made headlines just a few days ago with the Board of Water Supply asking residents to conserve waters, knowing with what's going on with Red Hill and the situation there, and now being asked to conserve water solely because of the supply and demand issues that could be popping up, that could even get worse in the summer. What are your thoughts moving forward and your concerns about this potential water issue as we move into the summer months?
Great question. Thank you for asking. You know, first of all, I want to give a shout out to Ernie Lau. He really is a hero. You know, he brought this up early and been fighting for clean water. And last year, we knew this was going to happen. So to answer your question directly, it was completely predictable. We had to close down the halava shaft that provides water all the way from Moanaloa to Hawaii Kai. There's 400,000 water users, and they shut down that shaft because of this leak. You know, last year, me and Radien Cordero, Councilmember Cordero, introduced Bill 48, working with the Board of Water Supply, to say that the Navy has to come to the city for a permit to put underground storage tanks above an aquifer, right? And you recall, the Board of, excuse me, the Department of Health, in my mind, really did drop the ball. They weren't exercising their oversight over these tanks. The EPA delegated it to the Department of Health. So we stepped in, introduced the bill, and I like to think that it kind of got the ball rolling and got folks to wake up and say, this is important. Of course, the spill and folks not being able to drink water had a lot to do with that. But I was so happy to hear that the Biden administration made that decision to close down these tanks. But of course, that still needs to be done. There's still fuel in those tanks, and it's super scary, right? The Navy's own, their own study says that it's imminent that this will happen again. So the sooner we empty those tanks, the sooner the better, and we'll have clean drinking water. But, you know, I want to apologize to our residents. You know, we should have done this sooner. We should have closed down these tanks years ago so that these types of restrictions could have been prevented.
You know, the city does hold a lot of power because you do have control over a number of properties that the Army and that the military overall uses for training and whatnot. We know that you and Councilmember Kia Aina did send a letter to the Biden administration saying that you would not renew those leases if they did not follow through. Where does that stand right now? What is sort of your threshold for keeping the Navy accountable? And what more do you think they need to do going forward? You know, we're looking at possibly having to drill new wells and find new sources of water. Who should pay for that? And if it is the Navy, how do we make them do that?
No, thank you. You know, Esther Kia Aina used to work for Senator Akaka and Congressman Case, and she has a lot of friends who are in influential places. So she and I authored a letter to the president, and she had it delivered personally by one of her many contacts in Washington, DC. And I think the president took it to heart. I mean, it really had to be an executive decision, right? Closing down these tanks, especially in light of what's going on in the world today with Ukraine. We're in a strategic spot here in Hawaii. So the fact that they took our letter seriously and our congressional delegation working tirelessly to convince the Biden administration and the Navy to close down the tanks was significant. You know, I'm not sure whether or not they really took our threats seriously, and I do use the word threat lightly. But the Navy does have a lot of leases here on the island and in the state, and those leases could have been jeopardized. I mean, I can't speak for the mayor or the governor or the legislature, but I certainly would have made, and did make, that an issue, that we live together on an island, we need to work together to keep our drinking water safe.
And to just follow up, do you believe that those leases that the city does control could be used as a leverage point to really make sure that the Navy does, in fact, stick to this timeline, that they do, in fact, de-fuel and close this down? Because I think there is some concern that it's one thing to say something, and we've heard them, and we've heard Ernie Lau express some comments about often what the Navy says and what they do is completely different. Do you believe that holding these leases as possible negotiating points to ensure that they actually follow through and execute this?
No, absolutely, right? I mean, the fact of the matter is these tanks need to be de-fueled as soon as possible because, as I mentioned, the prospect of another leak is imminent, right? It's imminent. These tanks are 50, 60 years old, and they're gonna leak. So holding their feet to the fire is something that I think all elected officials and government officials should do. And if we need to say, hey, we're not going to renew your leases if you don't get rid of this fuel. Not, let me rephrase that. You shouldn't get rid of this fuel, but you need to move it, right? Take it off or out of those tanks that are above the aquifer and do it as quickly as possible. So short answer is yes. I think that is a good leverage to get them to do exactly that.
In the meantime, we still do have this issue of needing to conserve water. What are your thoughts moving forward as we do head into the summer? Do you think that we could have mandatory restrictions? And what are you telling your constituents, especially, you know, we're going to have a lot of tourists coming here. There's a lot of pent-up demand for travel, and we know that that means a lot more water being used, especially when it gets hot and a lot of folks are on vacation. They don't necessarily think about taking shorter showers and whatnot. So what do you propose going forward as we deal with the water shortage?
Like I said, you know, Ernie Lau is my hero, and if he says we gotta do it, we gotta do it. And I want to just apologize to water users that we need to conserve, we need to conserve. It's as simple as that. As far as the hotels are concerned, you know, I intend to talk to the hotel industry to get them to be a partner with us, to take this seriously as well. You know, the city has gone through various showers and put those limiters on those showers, similar to those in the public bathrooms where you push the button, the water goes on for a few seconds and then turns off. I think those types of things is important and we should do.
Want to switch gears here and talk a little bit more about what's happening with COVID-19. Of course, we are seeing some of these restrictions lift. It's been a week now since the Safe Access Oahu program has dissolved. And we also have heard from the governor about his plans to move forward beyond this emergency proclamation and with the removal of masks in spaces, as well as the Safe Travels program. Your thoughts with the city, at the city council and things that are managed at that level? How you guys are moving forward beyond COVID-19 and some of the policies that were set up in place to protect people? How are those going to be changing moving forward?
Well, I'm agreeing with the mayor and the governor's decision to repeal the emergency proclamations and try to get back to normal. In fact, we've been having remote testimony here on the council for over a year now, and I'm looking forward to opening up the chamber to have in-person testimony. But I do think we need to still be vigilant. There could be another variant coming, and we need to keep our testing sites open, making sure people get vaccinated as much as possible, and of course, wearing our masks, you know? While it's not mandatory, I just want to encourage people and employees in the city council to keep wearing their masks because it works, right? I know it's uncomfortable for some folks, but it works. But basically, we're following exactly what the mayor and the governor are doing here on the council.
I want to bring in this question from Anne Marie Madero. She says, "With the recent federal corruption cases of state legislatures and yesterday's ethics violations by two city council representatives, what repercussions would the city council enforce against Representative Tupola and Representative Sunayoshi? Your thoughts on what we learned in those cases?"
Well, thank you. I do want to point out that the city council has our own council administrative manual that deals with what this ACA fund is supposed to be used for. An ACA stands for Annual Contingency Allowance. Each council member has an allowance of $25,000, and it's supposed to be used basically to keep in contact with your constituents, right? Through, I spend a lot of my ACA account on mail to my constituents, giving them an update on what's going on, including what I just sent out, an update on the timeline of Red Hill. To me, this is the best use of that money. But you can also use it for things such as training, research, supplies, general operating charges, conferences or workshops, mileage reimbursement, and equipment and furniture if necessary. That's what it's supposed to be used for. You know, I haven't talked to Councilmember Tupola about that as far as what ramifications that we are going to do. She is in the leadership team, as well as Councilmember Kia Aina. But I have to share with you, part of the problem is that we have what's called the Sunshine Law. We can't talk about that amongst the leadership team without being in violation of Sunshine Law. So I gotta be very careful about that and what happens going forward. But I do intend to have our city lawyers put on seminars for each council member to educate folks on what you can and cannot use this ACA fund for.
Want to switch gears. You know, with the city council, there are so many issues. It feels like we just popcorn from one thing to the next. It's not just one thing. There's so much going on at the city level. But I want to talk a little bit about our police enforcement and some of the things that are happening there. You know, obviously, there is a shortage of police officers, and there is some growing concern in the community that COVID-19 has also accelerated, you know, the rate of or the amount of police officers that we have, with many taking early retirement and seeking other opportunities in that field. What are your thoughts on how the city council can help to increase the overall police presence? And in working with the Police Commission, how is that going to happen?
Thank you. You know, first and foremost, I want to say that we fully intend to fund, let me rephrase that, we intend to fully fund the police department. You know, going across the country, there's been a movement to defund the police. Well, I don't agree with that. This year, they're asking for an additional $12 million over their budget last year. And by the way, that's the largest department in the city, is the Home Police Department. Last year, we appropriated $300 million for the police department. This year, they're asking for $312 million, and I'm happy to give them the resources that they need. But I also want to point out that a patrolling police officer is the best deterrent to crime. Even law-abiding citizens could be driving going 15 miles an hour in one five, and when you look and you see a police officer behind you, you step on the brake, right? A patrolling police officer, again, is the best deterrent to crime. And I just want to point out that we fully funded patrol every year since I've been on the council because I recognize the importance of the patrol officers. It's a hard job, folks, and nobody's denying that. I think that's why we have approximately 329 uniformed police officer vacancies. 329. Now, I understand what Chopo is saying. They want these patrol slots filled, and I want them filled too, right? Based on what I told you, patrolling officers the best deterrent to crime. But how do we fill these positions when people aren't applying? I think the last recruit class, only 19 people graduated, 19. And then the chief said, sometimes you lose another 5% to 10% of those. Once the recruit gets on the job, they find out that they don't like the job and they quit. That's really, really disturbing. And Kalaisu, like you pointed out, all these officers who are eligible for retirement, we could be in a world of hurt. The pay is actually a decent pay, right? It really is. But I'm looking forward to the chief and our new chief trying to work out how to solve that problem. As far as the council's concerned, we're going to give them the resources that they need to fill these positions. But it really, really is a difficult, difficult issue.
On the subject of the bottom line and the budget, Ashley Mizuo, who of course is a familiar face to you over there, she covers Honolulu Halei for the paper. She's asking, "What are the main parts of the mayor's proposed budget that has stood out to you and why?"
Well, homelessness and affordable housing, to me, is amongst one of the most important issues other than crime prevention, right? And the Office of Community Services is taking a $12 million cut. And in my mind, I'm really concerned about that because this is the department that deals with homeless folks. You know, I live in Kamaki, and me and my kids walk down and get bubble tea right around the corner from my house. And there's homeless folks living in the doorways in Kamaki. And by the way, this is happening everywhere, from Hawaii Kai to Haleiwa. And when we're cutting their budget, that concerns me a great deal. You know, the Department of Land Management, we appropriated $170 million last year to build affordable housing for our local residents. You know, I come from a family of six kids, and I'm, we're all born and raised right here in Honolulu, and five of my siblings live on the mainland. My parents, my dad went to St. Louis High School and grew up in Kalihii, and he moved to the mainland and ended up passing away on the mainland. And it scares me to death to think if my two kids go to college on the mainland and don't come back. We gotta start investing in affordable homes for young people and kupuna and everybody in between. So like I said, we appropriated $170 million to do exactly that, to acquire land to build affordable housing on and to build affordable housing on land currently owned by the city. And I was really sad to hear the Department of Land Management is not using that money, right? And they don't really have any plans in the future to use the bulk of that money. You know, the legislature and the council can only do so much. We can make a law or appropriate money, but ultimately, if the departments aren't going to use it, that's a problem to me.
Want to bring in, as you know, you mentioned the topic of homelessness, another question we have and that is coming from Calvin, says, "Could the city council play a role in expanding the CORE program to other neighborhoods? There was recent information that CORE made a presence in Waikiki, Hawa'au, Kamaki, Kapahulu, et cetera." Wanted to get your comment to this question, but also overall, how you think the CORE program is working as a whole under this new plan by the Blanchard administration?
So I support the CORE program. I think it's a good program. And for your listeners and viewers, what it does is they repurpose an ambulance, and they put a doctor in there who knows about mental illness and is trained in dealing with folks suffering from mental illness. But, and they go out and they'll try to help folks who are on the street. But ultimately, they talk to the folks, and if they don't want the help, CORE leaves, and they'll come back and try again. And Calvin, I really believe we should expand CORE because you gotta keep at it and keep working with these people. But if you don't have someplace for these people to go, then that's the biggest piece of the puzzle here, right? CORE is just a small piece of the puzzle. You want to be able to go and talk to these folks, get them the medication and help that they need. But ultimately, we gotta find someplace for them to live because it's simply not acceptable to be living at a bus stop or in the doorway of a business. And unless we start investing in building places for these people to live, no matter how much you expand CORE, it's not going to work, right? Again, we need CORE, and it is a piece of the solution. But ultimately, again, we gotta start building places for people to live. And by the way, those folks who are still on the street, I'm happy to report that you don't see too many kids and families out there anymore. These are the hardcore folks who are just denying services, right? So, and they've been through the shelters already. You know, I talked to a gentleman who was living at the bus stop down the street from my house, and he says he doesn't want to go into the shelter because he gets beat up. And there's folks suffering from substance abuse and mental illness, and he just doesn't feel safe. He'd rather live under the bus stop, getting wet when it rains, than being in one of these shelters. So again, and I sound like a broken record, but if I have to say this a million times, I will. We need to build places for people to live.
Part of that affordable housing piece also is eliminating illegal vacation rentals and trying to get some of that housing back into local families' hands as opposed to vacationers. Tell us about where the illegal vacation rental bill stands right now, and also wanted to ask you about the vacancy tax that you're proposing.
Oh, thank you. So Bill 41 is dealing with short-term rentals. As you may recall, my first day on the office, we did a 12-hour hearing on Bill 89. Bill 89 was an attempt to curb short-term rentals. Apparently, they tried to go out and make rules governing, you know, the policy of short-term rentals, and they weren't able to do it. So they came back to the council with Bill 41, really complicated. It basically says you can only have short-term rentals in resort areas. Think about this, folks. Prior to the pandemic, we had 10 million visitors to Hawaii. 10 million, right? And the hotels say they can only accommodate 7 million. So just doing the math, that means 3 million people were living in your neighborhoods in residential areas, right? 3 million. Now, you wonder why the traffic is so bad and our beaches are so crowded. And there's one thing that COVID taught us. It was really nice to have our beaches back and our roads back for local people to use and enjoy. So the idea really is, you know, by shutting down short-term rentals, you really are limiting the amount of visitors who come to Hawaii. And I got no problem with that, especially after COVID and seeing how nice it was to have, you know, our parks and our beaches back for local people. So it really does talk about capacity, right? If we can limit it to the amount of hotel rooms we have, limit the amount of tourists, the amount of hotel rooms we have, and tourists who are going to pay a little bit more, right? According to Paul Brubaker, economist, he said, "The amount of revenue that we're generating off of the 10 million visitors was the same as when we had 6 million visitors years ago." So why are we putting all that, all of our resources, right, into this? They use our water, they use our parks, they use our roads, but we're not making any more money. So I have no problem, like, keeping them in the resort area. Welcome, aloha, come to Hawaii, but stay in the resort area if you can. You're welcome to use our parks and whatnot, but, you know, 10 million is just too much. So cutting back on short-term rentals. The other added benefit to cutting down on short-term rentals is these homes that otherwise tourists would be staying in now can be rented out to local people, which is a good thing, right? And hopefully, that is what exactly happens. Bill 9 is a vacancy tax. I introduced Bill 9 because you have so many homes that are vacant, and you have offshore investors who are buying homes in Hawaii because our property tax rate is amongst the lowest in the country. It's 0.03%. 0.03%, that's less than 1% when other major cities charge 2.5% to 3%, right? So the idea is, fine, if you want to come here and invest in Hawaii, you gotta give back a little bit. And we want to raise their taxes a little bit more. You know, the council isn't in agreement on this, and I'm going to keep pushing for it. You know, I walk down Kahala Avenue in my district, and I go buy 10, 15 houses that are vacant, which is fine, but heck, either rent that out to someone or pay a little bit of a higher tax, and that's the idea. By the way, that came from a study done by the Oahu Rural Property Tax Advisory Commission. So I didn't make this up myself. This is a commission that talked about that. While we're talking about taxes, can I pivot to Bill 3 for a second?
Yes, for sure.
You know, everybody's taxes went up, their property taxes, this year, and that was really disturbing for me. I own a house that was built in 1927 in Kamaki, and it's about to fall down, but somehow it's now worth $200,000 more than it was last year. And some homes in my district are now worth $500,000. And the idea of Bill 3 is to get the Department of Budget and Fiscal Services to put in your bill why or how you came up with that value. Like, I want to know, I mean, everybody wants to know, how did you come up with this idea? Why is my old home in Kamaki now worth $900,000? For goodness sake, I think it's like 800 square feet, the whole house, and now it's worth $900,000? Tell us. Tell the taxpayer how you came up with that money or that value. And that's what Bill 3 does. It would require the Department of Budget and Fiscal Services to put in the bill, excuse me, yeah, your tax bill that you get in the mail, put in there exactly how you valued this property so that you can contest it if you don't agree with it. Right now, the bill is so stark, what you get from BFS, you can't tell. And I'm just requiring them to do that. I do want to point out, you could go to the Maui Finance Department website, and they tell you exactly what homes were sold in your neighborhood. You can search it by how many feet, right? 500, 1,000, 1,500 feet, what was sold in your district? And that's how they come up with their valuation. Well, in Honolulu, we should do the same thing. It's about openness and transparency, letting people know what's going on. By the way, can pivot again. I want everybody to go to our website, honolulucitycouncil.org. Really, it is about transparency and getting involved in city government. And our new website is fantastic. When you talk about the budget, you can go right on our website, click a button, and I broke it down by department so you can see what the Department of Planning and Permanence is asking for, what the police are asking for, what the Department of Community Services is asking for. And it breaks it down, and it's so great. You can also find out who your council member is just by clicking on there. You can watch our meetings, right? We record them. If you miss it, you can watch it later on, or you can watch it live. And you can search up bills that we've introduced and the agendas. And it's just such a wonderful, wonderful tool, and I'm really proud of it and proud of my staff for the hard work that they've done in creating this. And then we have Ho'okele, which is, it teaches you actually how to get involved in city government, right? Democracy only works if people get involved. So our website is trying to make it as easy as possible. The other thing I want to do is, now that Omicron is passed and assuming that things keep going the way they are, I want to take the Honolulu City Council into your neighborhoods and have hearings neighborhood by neighborhood and just get people to get involved and participate in what we're doing here because the work that we're doing affects all of you. It affects all of us, right? And the idea is really to get folks involved. I'm sorry, I'm vallawing too much, but I'm excited about the website.
It's March Madness, so there's a lot of pivot steps happening all over, so we understand.
And UH1 last night.
They did, they did. Unfortunately, we are almost out of time here. There are a number of other issues that we had hoped to discuss, but unfortunately, we are just all out. But really quickly, wanted to just ask you this question about, you know, when we talk about the overcrowding of our communities because of tourism, you know, there has been talk of a potential travel tax or something else that would create more fees for visitors coming to the islands. Of course, we know like areas like Honolulu Bay has increased fees there as well. Could we see more of this moving forward?
Yeah, you know, the road to Hana is an interesting thing. You gotta make an appointment now to go to Hana, you know? And I thought that was brilliant, right? You can limit folks' access to various areas, and that's something I want to look at, you know? Again, our beaches and our ocean is our greatest resource, and if it's overcrowded and local people can't get there, that's a problem. You know, there's technology out there, right? One of the things I'm looking at, it's called geo-fencing, right? You get the tourists to download an app, and then as they drive up to the blowhole, it'll pop up, beep, you are now entering the blowhole. You will be charged a quarter or 50 cents. You know, the technology is out there. We should be using this. And again, the whole idea is, if we can make a little bit more money to get our visitors to help us, then we lower taxes on local people, right? We can lower the taxes on local people. We can lower the taxes on local people. I own a 2004 Toyota Tundra truck. It's going to cost me $600 to register it this year. I would love to lower that for working families, right? And how do you do that? We gotta generate revenue somehow, and I don't want to raise property taxes. We absolutely do not want to raise property taxes on local people. So we gotta get creative and figure out how else can we get revenue, right? Vacancy tax is one, and perhaps this is another way. We can use technology to do that.
Lowering taxes on local people will always get votes, so we understand. That certainly makes you popular. We really appreciate all your time this morning, and thank you for pivoting with us. We covered so many topics that we'd love to have you on again soon.
Happy to do it, and aloha to you both. Have a great weekend.
Thank you. Great to hear from Tommy Waters, of course, the chair of the Honolulu City Council. We did cover a lot of ground, so if you missed any part of this program, go back and watch it from the beginning. Or remember, you can always download the podcast wherever you get your podcasts, just search for Spotlight Hawaii. This also airs on Channel 50. Interesting, right off the top, Ryan, we talked about the water shortages that Ernie Lau is talking about over at the Board of Water Supply. Basically, most folks in Honolulu being asked to reduce their water consumption by 10% for the foreseeable future. That, of course, is to deal with the impacts from shutting down some wells because of the Red Hill Fuel Storage Facility leaks. Council Chair Waters talking there about how the council, the city does hold a number of leases that the military uses for training and whatnot, and that those leases could be a negotiating point to making sure that the Navy does what they say they will when it comes to cleaning up the spill and draining the storage facility. Oh, and you are muted there.
We also heard his thoughts on the Honolulu Police Department and his plan to continue to try to find ways to fund the department and meet the demands of, you know, what they're asking for in terms of more of their budget. He's also saying that, you know, recruitment and getting new officers, of course, is going to be a priority for them moving forward in trying to find ways to support HPD and their efforts to get more police in our communities. Again, a number of topics that we discussed, so we encourage you to go back and watch. We also expect to discuss a lot with our guests on Monday.
That's right. We'll be talking to Governor David Ege. Since the last time we talked, he changed his position on indoor masking, so what changed and what is he looking at going forward? We'll also be talking to him about some of the budget decisions that are being made at the Capitol and what he thinks about that going forward and the bills that are crossing over. So plenty to talk about with the governor on Monday. We hope to see you right back here at 10:30 then. Have a great weekend.
Aloha.
This episode of Spotlight Hawaii is brought to you by Longstrugs.